Okay.
You ready?
We're ready.
Okay. Welcome to the regular meeting of the Berkeley Planning Commission. Today is December fifteenth, two thousand twenty. In accordance with the continuing legislation, our meeting today is, or tonight is being conducted virtually via the Zoom platform. So, it's a call to order. Please rise for the pledge allegiance. Anybody? Do we have a flag tonight?
Give the flag.
But I Google one really quick.
I have a folded military flag here I could put up on the screen.
About... Yeah, we might have to just say without the flag. Let's see. How about this? Share. And...
About that. Beautiful.
Okay.
I pledge allegiance to the flag.
Of the United States of America. To the republic where we stand. One nation.
Under God. Indivisible.
Indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
That's a beautiful flag, Stan.
Oh, thank you.
Okay. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Bardis?
Here, and I'm in Berkeley, Michigan.
Commissioner Dolan?
Here, and in Berkeley, Michigan.
Commissioner Kemptner?
Here in Berkeley, Michigan.
Commissioner Patterson?
Here, Berkeley, Michigan.
Commissioner Richardson? Commissioners, or Vice Chair Smith?
Here in Berkeley, Michigan.
Commissioner Stern?
Here in Berkeley, Michigan.
Commissioner Trotto? Chair Kapalansky?
Okay, I believe we need a motion, or if someone making motion to excuse Ms. Kapalinski. Mr. Trotto, have you heard about Mr. Richardson?
I haven't heard anything from Commissioner Richardson.
Okay, so how do we approach this? I'm asking for a motion.
We can, we can do them individually, or you can do them lumped together, just the two?
I move to excuse Chair Kapalansky and Commissioner Trotto from the December fifteenth meeting.
Support.
Okay. Dolan?
Uh, yes.
Kemptner?
Yes.
Patterson?
Yes.
Stern?
Yes.
Bardis?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes. Do we... We have Mr. Commissioner Richardson to deal with here. You had not heard from him that he would be late, or... Okay. So, do we make a... This is fairly new. Do we make a motion to...
Well, we don't need to necessarily make a motion to that he's unexcused. He may show up a little bit late, but by not excusing him, by default, then he would just be unexcused.
Fair enough. Fair enough.
Can I ask a question? Is that something like, let's say he's in a car accident or something, and then next meeting, you know, can we excuse them at the next meeting, or does it have to be at this meeting?
We can excuse them retroactive, yes, if provided that there are, there are extenuating circumstances, yes.
Sure. Like, when we, when we go through the minutes, the next month is the time, right? Okay, beautiful. Okay, just a reminder, everybody, I only have four people, well, three when I'm talking on the screen here. So, if, if Ms. Schluto, or whoever can let me know, or raise your voice when you want to speak, because I don't, I can't see everybody on my small screen here. So, do we have an approval of the agenda, a motion to approve the agenda tonight?
Yes, I make a motion to approve the agenda for last meeting.
Scary agenda. Okay.
Second.
Kemptner?
Yes.
Patterson?
Yes.
Stern?
Yes.
Bardis?
Yes.
Dolan?
Uh, yes. Can I approve a agenda that I wasn't at?
This is the agenda for this meeting.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yes.
Okay, yes.
Uh, Smith?
Yes. Okay, agenda approved, approval of the minutes. Need a motion to approve the minutes of our regular meeting, November twenty-fourth. Do we have a motion?
I move to approve the minutes from the November twenty-fourth Planning Commission meeting.
Second.
Okay, anybody have any comments?
Can I approve these meeting minutes?
Yes, you can.
Okay.
No comments? No other comments? Okay, roll call, please.
Patterson?
Yes.
Stern?
Yes.
Bardis?
Yes.
Dolan?
Yes.
Kemptner?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes. Good, like a motion to approve the minutes from our work session on December first. First. Do we have a motion?
Motion to approve the work session, December first, two thousand twenty.
Oh, second.
Stern?
Yes.
Bardis?
Yes.
Dolan?
Yes.
Kemptner?
Yes.
Patterson?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes. Oh, excuse me. Okay, now we come to communications part. If any member, if any member of the public wishes to speak during the, during the appropriate agenda item, please raise your hand at that point. Well, I'm sorry, raise your hand feature or dial star nine if you've called in. Comments can be submitted to planning@berkleymich.net. And right now, we're taking communications for comments. Oh, I'm sorry, I jumped to communications. I'm reading citizen comments. Do we have any communications, Ms. Schluto?
No, none this evening.
Okay, so let me continue. This is a citizen comment part. Please, a reminder that the Planning Commission will not engage you in a discussion. Please state your name and address. Keep your comments to three minutes or less. Are there any members of the public who wish to speak on a non-agenda item at this time?
I don't see anybody in the waiting room or raising their hands.
Not lining up? Okay. Give a couple of seconds, or... Nobody's there?
No.
Okay, so I guess we move on to our order of business. Ms. Schluto, would you read the first item, please?
Yes, meeting dates, this is a matter of reviewing and approving the meeting dates for the two thousand twenty-one calendar year. I have included a brief memo just listing the dates for the two thousand twenty-one calendar year. I would just like to draw your attention to, I've added a couple of the work sessions that we've already have on our agendas for the master plan, so it's just here, so we have a full and comprehensive schedule, but I wanted to draw your attention to the highlighted date, Tuesday, December twenty-first. Typically, in December, we meet the third Tuesday of the month instead of the fourth due to holidays, but this is the, this is the third, third Tuesday of the month, but it is the week of the traditional holiday. So, I just wanted to draw attention to that to make sure that we were on, so everyone could review their calendars.
Okay, thank you. Any comments from anybody? I will say I don't exactly know my schedule for December twenty-first of two thousand twenty-one at this point, so we'll assume it's good for now. Do we need a motion for this?
Yes.
Here, okay.
Move to approve the two thousand twenty-one calendar Planning Commission meeting dates.
Second.
Okay. Bardis?
Yes.
Dolan?
Yes.
Kemptner?
Yes.
Patterson?
Yes.
Richardson?
Yes.
Stern?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes. Okay, item two on the order of business is the discussion of projections into side yard setbacks. Ms. Schluto?
Yes, so this is an item that we have been discussing at length for the last couple of months. The, the, the beginning of this discussion was related to chimneys, and whether or not chimneys should be exempt from a projection standard. That was the interpretation of the building official many, many years ago. So, we wanted to look at if the box fireplaces versus masonry fireplaces, if those should be regulated differently in allowing to encroach into a, mainly a side yard setback differently than any other type of projection, specifically a cantilever, bay window, or otherwise. The accompanying ordinance language shows the existing ordinance with the proposed changes that we had discussed at the November twenty-fourth meeting, and following that is the proposed ordinance with some changes based on our discussion last month. So, the formatting is a little bit different. It's cleaned it up a little bit and kind of given a definition of the types of projections that we're talking about. Either the brick or masonry fireplaces with the foundation going all the way down to grade, or the cantilever projections, which would include the box fireplaces, bay windows, awnings, or other similar cantilevers. The, the formula or the ratio for what or how, how much projection, that hasn't changed. This is just cleaning it up and making things a little bit clearer. In one of our discussions in the previous months, we did get talking about egress windows, and this is something that a window well, egress window has come up in, as a matter of, of an issue as of late, and so while the Planning Commission had determined that that was a, not a structure, and that was approved to go into any setback because it's a requirement based on the building code, this is something that I think we, we need to address a little bit more, considering this has become a raised issue as of late to city staff. So with that, we can continue, continue to talking about projections and encroachments into setbacks. I'd be happy to answer any questions that you have.
Does, do any of the commissioners have any comments or questions on the, the report that Ms. Schluto put together here?
I just have one question. So, this projections are not the same as egress thing, correct? That would be a different ordinance? Is that what you...
Well, while we're looking at projections or encroachments into setbacks, this would be, because we're having this conversation, this would be the time where if we wanted to look at a type of projection or encroachment to include window wells, we can include that in, under subsection one A of the types of projections. So are we allowing those into the setback, specifically a side yard setback, how far that type of thing, because that has been a, a raised issue this past week, and has caused some, some concern. So we don't have anything in our ordinance right now that stipulates how those are to be addressed and how those are to be regulated. Again, based on a previous building official's interpretation, those were not considered to be an accessory structure. Those could project into a setback as much as needed to be done because they are a health and safety concern for the tenants. So that is how those have been approved, for especially the, the residential rebuilds that are very popular in Berkeley right now, but it has caused some, as of late, there has been an issue raised where we might want to look at it a little bit more carefully. If we're going to allow those as a type of projection, this is the time to, to add that to our codified language.
So right now, egress windows are just not really regulated, right? Like, they're just allowed anywhere, any distance and all of that, yes?
They have to be on the property of that building site. They can't encroach onto another property line, but yes.
Ms. Schluto, what, if you would, what is the, what is the issue that came up in this last week, if you could elaborate a little bit?
Sure, so there is a, a new home that's being built next to, you know, and within that five-foot setback, this window well is being, being dug, and it's within inches of a neighbor's fence. So during construction, there's been damage to that fence. There's concern that the, the window well being that close and with the excavated ground grade being disturbed that close to a cement slab driveway, that it's going to cause that to buckle, and certainly the damage to the fence is a, is another issue, but it has been brought to our attention that there is not any regulation for these window wells to occur anywhere on the property. So, given that we're having these conversations with projections tonight, I wanted to, to bring that to the Planning Commission's attention as to how they've been, been discussed and, and reviewed up until this point.
Okay. These discussions have been generally, obviously, regarding above-grade projections that, that, you know, encroach into the, into the side yard setbacks. Egress windows are a fact now, last, last code cycle or two, they're required for living spaces below grade in a basement. You're right, we probably never discussed these before. Now, they don't really have too much of a visual effect on a neighbor's property, but thinking about, you know, they extend four something feet out of the, out of the setback, or out of the side of the basement, it could come very close to a property line. You're absolutely correct. Damage to a neighbor's fence, damage to a neighbor's property, I imagine is like any other damage to a neighbor's property during construction, it has to be remediated, or it has to be fixed, right?
Yes.
I, I'd like to hear from fellow commissioners. I believe, you know, this really isn't a visual, a visual encumbrance or a visual item, and that's really what all this is, what this is. What all these items that we've been talking about for months, but it is in fact, is in fact a projection, so to speak, a below-grade projection into the setback. I don't have an issue. I, I, I believe we need to address it. I personally don't have an issue with the, 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 the damaged neighboring properties and other issue altogether. I'd like to hear what the other commissioners may think.
I guess I would have a concern with impeding drainage along the side yard. And, and there does seem to be an issue because, you know, you don't just stop digging right at the, where the edge of the window well is, you have to go a little bit further, right? Um, this wouldn't be the first time I've heard of somebody having damage, whether it's a fence or the dirt caving in by a driveway, digging that close. I think that's where my biggest concern comes. And, yeah, we do have drainage problems in the cities, so we do want to make sure that, you know, water isn't collecting right next to, you know, a neighbor's fence line, so we probably have to somehow regulate it.
If I may, I, I agree with Lisa and Marty. I think the drainage is a huge issue, and I'm just looking out my window, well, it's dark out, but I'm thinking about looking out my window, and if I put an egress in, and my neighbors did, they would almost be touching. We don't have that much on the east side of my house, that much room, so if, I mean, and if we're talking egress, like, if I wanted to do a whole, like, walkout on my basement, would that be similar if I only went four feet? So, it doesn't have to just stop at a window, correct?
Well, what, what we're talking here is the, the window well and the, the escape. If you're talking about going out to your rear yard, a walkout basement, that's a little bit different. We're talking about projecting and encroaching into the setbacks.
Yeah, I was thinking more like I have two windows in my basement, so if I turned them both into egress, and then just took out the little bit of lawn in between, would that be considered an egress as well?
Yeah.
So, I mean, that could be potentially the whole length of my house, or most of the length of the side of my house, to have a inward projection, instead of, you know, a, a dig out. I think it's a, something we definitely need to, to, to discuss.
If I may, address the issue of drainage. We, last year, there was a, a rework of the grading ordinance, so any new builds or any new homes that go in have to submit a grading plan that are reviewed by the building official to ensure that they're, that the grade isn't going to be changed, or if it is changed, that the water doesn't collect and doesn't spool onto, pool onto adjacent property owners. So, most of the, a lot of the new homes are almost putting in French drains or addressing the, the drainage otherwise. So that is something that they are required to do before they get their building permit.
Yeah, it seems to me, my thoughts are, the drainage would be addressed otherwise, and since these are at grade or below grade, I guess I'm just thinking that's not the intent of the projection section that we've been reviewing, because I think it would open up a, there's, I guess there's a lot of other than issues if we're talking at grade or below grade projections.
Well, that, would they become encroachments?
Yeah, like that they become encroachments.
It changes the discussion a little bit, if we wanted to then start talking about any other thing that we would allow into the setback area, steps or anything else.
Yeah, I kind of, I kind of feel from a design standpoint that the drainage, like you said, has already been addressed, and any damage to a driveway or anything like that should, should be mitigated and properly designed and checked by anybody doing the house plans, so.
Question for Ms. Schluto. Can you hear me? Yes. Is there anything in the building code or, or, or in best practices, best design practices that you're aware of, which at all pertains to the positioning of these wells? I wouldn't imagine there'd be anything about property lines there, but what about proximity to other buildings or driveways, things like that? Is there anything like that you're aware of?
Not that I'm aware of, but I can, I can do some research on that, but not, nothing, nothing's coming to mind at the moment.
Okay, I believe, if I may, I believe the building code, we deal more with the building code than the residential code, but I believe that the residential code does not state where it has to go. It just states that it must be, you must have one. And, so, if that answers your, your question, Mr. Richardson.
Well, my, my concern is, you know, is there some, some risks posed by improper placement of these, these egress windows or, or not? I, I can't think of any myself, but I'm not a designer.
Well, I don't think the building code addresses the property rights of a neighbor, so to speak.
Well, I, I would imagine not, but...
No, just says, you know, it must, it must happen. It's up to the developer, the designer, the contractor, whoever's putting the project together to locate it and verify that it isn't damaging a neighbor's property. And as we said, that, that comes under another section in our, in our building, or in our ordinance.
Okay.
So.
While I would expect that a developer fix whatever they, they injure on a neighboring property, I also would like our codes to try and prevent that as much as possible so that the residents don't have to, like, try and go through that, that battle, or even deal with, with their property being damaged.
Yeah, that's why I asked the question. I mean, what is the risk, really? You know? This particular incident seems to be a builder that doesn't do the job very well, or, you know, more so than a design issue, but I want to make sure that that is in fact accurate.
Is there any guidance to how far away from a driveway or something, something should be dug down? You know, like, when you're doing foundations or anything, because I think that's where the sauce stems from. Not so much the actual window well, but that, that digging.
Right, like, you know that a window well is going to be five feet from the property line, but as a builder, you also know that you're going to have to dig three feet past that, making two feet from the property. Like, so, do we know that when it goes for approval, that they're going to be within a foot of a property line? And then it's an issue, which is a totally different issue than the setback, or the projections that we're talking about right now. I understand that, but...
um, I think that's part of the issue in this case. It's just that you have to dig so much bigger. Like, if you think, if when they dig a basement, they the basement's significantly larger than what the basement ends up being. Um. I feel like that needs to be addressed at the building permit approval step.
Maybe.
Yeah, exactly. There may be situations where uh it just does not fit. Uh, and we're talking about a five-foot setback. It may, you know, it may just not, it may just not fit in that, you know, in certain in certain situations. Um. Is that something we really need to address here, Erin? Or is that something that, you know, Bill, I would imagine when plans are submitted to the building department, these egress windows are shown on those plans?
They are, yes.
Okay, yeah, okay, we do not, you know, obviously, I don't necessarily believe it, it it belongs in this section. Um, it, you know, it 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 is really something that I think is is has been said before is really a a part of the the submittal process that, you know, for the building permit.
But don't we need to have something that they can go with? Like, you're only allowed to dig eighteen inches from a a property line or something that the building department can point to as a reason to not allow or to allow? Like, we have to make some ordinance.
Mm-hmm. There would need to be something that we can point to, like you said, uh that stipulates what what has changed and what our requirements are. Um, simply stating you have to, you can't dig within two feet, um, then that is, you know, the 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 burden then becomes on the the building department to go out and inspect every single day, every single job site. Um, and it puts them behind on doing other things and other jobs that need to be done, so um we would need to have something to reference to show that this has to be complied with instead of just please asking them pleased to do it.
What are the, what are the requirements now during, you know, ob- obviously, when they're when they're uh digging a basement, um, you're out four or five feet with your excavation, you know, uh, we're lucky here in a way, there's one, one good aspect of our our, you know, clay soil is, you know, the 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 angle of the um the excavation could be a little steeper. If it were sand, it'd be a much wider excavation. Um, do we have provisions in our in elsewhere in the ordinance, the construction, that you can only, and I'm asking that you can only dig to a certain point, you know, twelve inches, eighteen inches from the adjacent property line?
Not that I'm aware of, um. No, not that I'm aware of. I mean, as long as you're staying on your property line, that's 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 the boundaries of of where you can dig, because a lot of times they're they're putting in uh fences or other things like that, which require excavation of a certain certain degree. So, no, we don't have any, not that I'm aware of.
Because I know issues where where where, you know, there has been damage to a driveway, obviously fences and other things on neighboring yards, and that is, that is up to the contractor to repair. Um. But this is a little different because we are projecting away from the the foundation wall above and beyond the normal, you know, three, four, whatever feet it takes to uh uh to excavate for a basement. Um, I don't know if it belongs in this section, though.
Okay.
Okay. Because, like I said, this is more of a above-grade regarding of a of of grade projections.
Right, and I brought it up for this discussion only because we were talking about um brick or masonry fireplaces with foundations, so that's something that happens from grade up, but it is something that projects from the the building itself.
Mm-hmm.
So if we want to look at doing a another section, if we want to continue this discussion, um, this is kind of segueing away from from the projections, but if we want to continue this discussion with, you know, window wells, egress windows, or any other type of encroachments uh into setbacks, uh, we could continue to do that next month.
I feel.
It's not considered exterior appliances, is it?
Um, trying to get your washing machine through the.
I feel like there should be something, um, I feel like there should be something. I don't think it's appropriate in this section, though.
Yeah, that's another discussion.
Yeah, I'm curious just to know whether there's a, you know, a uh a risk factor with the placement of these. If if there isn't, then we're we're kind of reduced to talking about aesthetics more than anything else, I think.
Well.
You know.
Mark, here's my thought. If there's no if you don't have a fence and your neighbor can have an egress window built right at the edge of your property line, I feel like there's like an injury. There's something at that point where, I mean, they're saying that it can go within to the setback, so it can almost touch your, it can almost touch your property line, because there's nothing that's stopping it.
Almost, but not quite.
Right.
Get to do what you want with your own property.
There's no way to put that in without disturbing that closely. There's no way to put that in without disturbing your neighbor's property.
Well, I'm not dismissing your concern.
No, I know. I don't think, I just.
Not at all.
Which is why I feel like there there should be something. If I may, I think we're talking about kind of two separate things, but they go hand in hand. Is in one conversation, we're talking about encroachments with these window wells, but in the second one, it's talking about how close you can dig for anything at all, whether they're doing a window well or not, um, to protect those neighbors. And that's something we can certainly look at if that's, am I hearing that that direction of the conversation correctly?
Yes, and and I, and Erin, I think, um, just as a general question too about the digging part. Um, that seems like, I I don't know how much we can dictate, like, the means and the methods for a contractor to build a house, because it sort of seems like if it's designed appropriately and they use shoring or they use any means they need to build something safely in their permanent condition, that seems like that would be the building process and not necessarily um, the final condition of a a well in this in the setback. So I I definitely do think it's two different things. The building thing, um, the construction part of it, I guess I'm not really sure that seems fit even for it to be addressed within the, within like our set of ordinances that we're working with. That's, because then you're like, you're right, we're talking about anything you dig and like.
Correct.
That doesn't seem, that's like, I don't know, that just seems like we're dictating how something should be constructed, which is a tricky line, I think, so.
Do other cities regulate that at all? Do you know? I mean, we can't have been the first city to come up with any of, you know, to have this issue.
Well, they, a lot of the other communities I've I've worked in, they deal with that in a in a sense of uh what's allowed to encroach into your setback. So if they allow window wells or if they allow um um a- any other type of permanent fixture attached to the foundation, they know that it's going to dig that much further. So they have allowed window wells to encroach up to two feet into the setback, three feet into the setback, because knowing that they will have to dig out at least another twelve to eighteen inches outside of that still puts them in safe distance from from a property line. So they they have it built in that way.
So is it your thought that this is where the window well issue or egress wish, egress windows issue belongs is in projections, or can you foresee it being somewhere else?
It can be somewhere else. We can certainly open it up to um uh an encroachment discussion. Um, and then we can look at any other type of fixtures or anything else that we would like to that we think would be appropriate to encroach into the setback or just just window wells themselves. Because right now we don't have anything, so it's it's been processed of the building or the interpretation of the building official that they can go wherever they are placed, provided that they are on uh that that subject property. Um, so.
Yeah, and and similar to like the air conditioners, if you're landlocked by a driveway on one side and you don't want your window well in the back of your house, you're going to put it in this whole area where, like, everything else is going to eventually go. So that seems to make sense, I think, if I was building a home, so that's where I would want it.
Yeah, and talking to the building clerk, that's where most of them go. Um, I did ask her this week if, you know, if we'd had any other complaints that she has heard uh regarding these window wells, and this was the first one that we had heard of. I I haven't received any other calls or complaints. Um, I understand that that my history here doesn't go back nearly as far as everyone else's, but um, this was the first issue that I that I've been made aware of with respect to the window wells, not damage to the other properties, because I know that's been a long-going issue.
Just a side note on this, I do real estate and I've been showing a ridiculous amount of new construction houses in Berkeley to one of my clients. Um, and I also am aware of the window well that you're talking about, and this is a case where this honestly is the closest I've ever seen it. So, I mean, that's just from my experience of recently being in a lot of new construction houses and then seeing this one, so, I mean, I don't know that it's always an issue like this.
Yeah, and then one other other comment, I think I was thinking about that from what um uh Mark had mentioned. I would think a builder, as far as like the safety of the location, I mean, the whole intent of the window well is for egress, so it, I would assume from a building perspective, it it would need to be put somewhere that someone could actually safely egress in some sort of situation, so um, because otherwise it would, that would be a real liability, I think. If it's, if it's, if it's not going to function at all, so, because it's not just there for aesthetic reasons, so.
Anything else? I have another question regarding this ordinance that we haven't brought up. Overall, uh, Ms. Luto did a fine job of rearranging this and putting this together. We've discussed in the past, um, well, let me go to item A, uh, it says projections may be permitted to extend in a required front, side, or rear yard setback. Um. We've talked in the past, you know, say in my neighborhood, you have a twenty-five-foot setback from the front. We've talked about open porches on the front of the house could protrude, I believe it was five feet, I could be wrong. Does that belong, when you mentioned front, side, and rear, does that belong in this section also? I I honestly can't tell you where it is right now in the ordinance, but we did talk about open front porches, not enclosed front porches.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, no, there is a separate section for porches and their um their extension into a front yard setback. It's, I believe it's eight feet, but you have to be fifteen feet from the front property line.
I don't remember the numbers. I remember talking about it and.
Yeah, that's in a separate section.
Okay, because that's very closely related to what we're doing here. But that's a separate sec- and and I'm I'm asking, I honestly didn't look it up and I should have, so I'm asking, so we have that covered. Um, okay, so we're not including front port, we're not including open porches in this section.
Right.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else have any comments? Any more comments? Everybody like it?
I'm good with that.
We all agree that the egress window is a different discussion for a different location?
Agreed.
I do.
Agreed.
Yes.
Yeah, I agree with that.
Okay. And and again, it may fall under the means and methods as um Mr. Bardis indicated, uh, you know, it's up to the contractor and the designer of the home, and we must have language in the ordinance somewhere about, uh, you know, encroaching excavations, encroaching on neighboring properties and safeguards and so on and so forth, so it probably belongs in that section. Um. And I don't know if that's really a zoning, that's not really a zoning ordinance issue, is it? More of a construction ordinance?
If it's in the zoning section, but that might be in in a separate building uh building section that would be just in the code of ordinances, that wouldn't come before you.
Right. That's what I would guess, and it would be another item, you know, in that overall umbrella of excavating to, you know, within whatever of a property line or ensuring no damage or or mitigating any damage that that did occur. Okay. So what do we do now? Do we set a date? This is an ordinance, right?
Yep, it's an ordinance, so we can, if you want to set a public hearing, I have I have forwarded on to the city attorney uh for him to review. I haven't received any notes from him as of yet. Um, so if I were to receive anything, we can certainly discuss that next time, but if you would like to set the public hearing, we can do that for the January meeting.
Do we need a motion to do that?
We just.
No, okay. Anybody, okay, does anybody have any more comments that they'd like to, anything they'd like to see or any last last comments on this? We have talked about this for several months, and I think I think this is well presented. Um. No more comments? Well, let's have a public hearing then. Let's set a date. Onto the next item.
Please.
Which is my favorite item. Discussion of exterior appliances. Okay, Ms. Luto, you've done quite a bit of work on this one also. Could you uh give us a background, please?
Yeah, uh, so this is the discussion of exterior mechanical equipment on residential commercial properties. Um, I brought this back to you and um because we have done some uh some work on this, uh, I wanted to show what we have added, what we have deleted. Um, so you'll see anything that's underlined is language that has been added from the last month's meeting and discussion, and anything that has a strike through um has been deleted. So we've provided a couple of definitions um for the air conditioning condenser unit, urgency power generator, and then a broad um definition for exterior appliances. Uh, at the residential discussion, we did get talking about screening. So I added some language about the principal structure, maybe consider one side of the screening and then um where that screening needed to be located in proximity to the unit. So they must be, screening must be provided from the street view and the facing the closest adjacent property. Uh, that will provide a little bit more clarity for developers' residents when they put these units in uh into their side yard. Uh, moving on to non-residential, per discussion and suggestion from the planning commission, I have stricken um one A wherein the exterior appliances at grade shall be located within at least ten feet of the principal building. It was noted that this is redundant, given subsection B, uh, so that A was stricken. Uh, we also had discussed uh enclosing generators into a sound attenuated enclosure if located adjacent to a residential property. This was something that was brought up last month, um, so I'd like to discuss that a little bit more in depth if you'd like to, um, and then provided a little bit more detail. Same thing with the screening. It's similar to um the requirements of the residential units. Finally, I added uh in um under the non-residential, that the planning commission may have, may modify the location of the exterior appliance on non-residential properties during the site plan review process. And this is in case there is a situation where um it might be prudent to locate something closer or in an alternate area um and uh where there's nothing else on the property, or it just makes sense, you know, this just gives you a little bit of flexibility on your end to look at it during the site plan review process. And finally, I added a a section uh per the planning commission's recommendation about non-conforming exterior appliances. So this will allow them to uh remain in their place, to be replaced, maintained, uh, any regular maintenance that needs to be done without them having to be relocated in conformity with the above ordinance. And with that, I'll be happy to answer any questions.
I have one. Um, and it's just about the non-conforming part. Um, because it says they can replace it um and maintain it. Then the next part says if it's destroyed by less than fifty per, by more than fifty percent, then you you can't just replace it then. So it almost feels like those are kind of conflicting to some degree. I mean, I get the idea ideally we want them in the right place. Um, and if you can replace it totally, if it's not destroyed. If it's not destroyed, then should you have to, you know, make it conform if it is destroyed? That makes sense?
This is, this is very standard language for non-conforming sections, um but anything can be changed or modified if we want to. This is more or less for those uh. Areas where the entire house is damaged. Um, more than fifty percent, less than fifty percent, so if. If it's less than fifty percent, it can stay uh to its previous use, but if more than fifty percent is done, they have to rebuild the entire house. Um, and everything needs to be moved and maintained and changed, or not maintained, but moved and changed around. Then that's the opportunity to bring something into into conformity.
I I had a question about that too, and I think you just answered that, so if my air conditioner. It it has to be destroyed, but if it breaks, let's say my compressor goes. That wouldn't, because that would be under the replacement, so it would have to like almost catch fire or have a tree fall on it, is that what the? Damage of fifty percent, not mechanical damage, I guess, or internal damage?
I see what you're saying, and I'm looking at it from that from that viewpoint, and I see that 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 does need clarification, so I will make sure to. Update that, so I apologize for that.
Thank you. I read it the same way, uh.
Yeah, I I read it, I, when I wrote it, I read it differently, and now I'm seeing it from your perspective, and uh that definitely does need some clarification, so I will fix it.
Yeah, if the, if this, if the uh residence that.
I was looking at more terms of residence, not not the appliance itself, yes.
Okay, so that makes sense.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay, because I I thought it was redundant from uh paragraph two, so. So if the residence it is serving is destroyed, then we bring it up to code as we would with the rest of the the remainder of the re- or with the residence.
Right, and that that was my viewpoint when I was writing it, so I apologize that that did not, obviously, that did not translate from brain to paper.
Okay, good.
And if they had to replace it, say it broke down and they replaced it, would they have to do the screening?
Excuse me, we would, yes, we would like to have that screening done, most of, most uh appliances or most yards are screened in or do have, provide some landscaping. That would be something that we would, we would want to see, yes.
Okay, I didn't understand that, what was the?
So if they, sorry, go ahead.
No, I I'm go, I'm I'm asking, is that under paragraph two if? Or or under paragraph three, that's going to be res- revised? Are you referring to adding screening? You know, a non-conforming, an existing non-conforming. Item can be replaced. Without, are we, did I, did I understand that? We're going to say can be replaced, but needs to be screened?
Well, that's up to the planning commission, and if they want to make that part of their, um, if if you're going to be replaced, then you would have to add screening or otherwise. I've seen it work both ways in in different communities where they wanted the screening to be included, even if it's being replaced or other or not. Uh, that's up to the planning commission to make that determination.
Okay. I don't, if it's non-conforming unit and they're replacing that unit, I don't see the need to. Uh, to tell them they ne- must now screen that unit.
I tend to agree with that.
Same. Yeah, I don't, I don't think the city is even going to get involved in in like a minor repair scenario. Anyway, or nor should it. I have another question. Please. The um uh line just above uh the not non-conforming exterior appliances section. Generator testing shall be permitted Monday, Friday, nine AM, six PM. Do we want that sort of um provision in in this part i- i- in in the. Uh zoning code, or sho- shouldn't that be in another part of the city ordinances?
Well, the other city ordinances are governed by sound ordinance violations, this just gives a little bit of direction for uh homeowners. Um contractors that when they're installing them to set a time, and then that way we could also put that on our applications. Um, that if they're installing a a generator, that they will comply with uh setting a testing. Uh a routine testing date between between such times.
Does does this apply to uh all uh generators, no matter where they're placed?
Yeah, this did not exclude either commercial or residential, it's it just says generator.
Well, ba- backyard backyard placement too?
Yep, all of them.
Okay.
This just prohibits them from going off at one, two o'clock in the morning. And it, well, I mean, it, this would be something that because we have in our ordinance, we could add to our application process. So that way they see it there and they're reminded that whoever's installing them to discuss with the homeowner when they want to set their, set their dates.
Okay, I, you know, I mean, all of that makes sense, it just doesn't seem like a zoning. Related provision to me, but um. I I don't think anybody's gonna. Uh, raise any serious objections as as this goes through, I I I would doubt it. I can tell you, I have to change the test on my generator, though, that's. That's that's the hidden, my hidden agenda here, I guess. We're gonna check. Yeah, I know, so I'll check. Anyway, um, he, I I, you know. Needs to be somewhere in the code, um. If this is the best place for it, I I'm not going to. You know, insist otherwise. Okay, we're kind of working ourselves backwards here, um. I think uh we'll get a clarification on the last paragraph of the non-conforming appliances, we talked about the testing. Continuing backwards, your item three, uh. Plant commission may modify location on and on, that's almost always a good provision in an ordinance, allowing the planning commission to um. You know, no matter what the ordinance is, allowing the planning commission to um uh make modifications for. Uh situations that may arise, so I like that also, so let's keep going backwards. Um, what about? The 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 location, a residential, uh specifically a residential, we've beaten this thing forever. Some of us longer than others, any continuing comments?
I think it looks good. Good job.
Everybody's tired of talking about it. Uh, agreed with that, yeah, I think we've. Yeah, I don't know what we can do, you know, there there's no magic uh language that's going to resolve the issues that we have in our town on forty-foot lots, there just isn't. And, you know, we could write pages and pages and it it, they're forty-foot lots, and we all know that, and fifty-foot lots. So, uh, I think we've made a, uh, in my opinion, made a a good, a good stab at it here. Um, there just is no magic way of resolving all the issues that can happen, so I think uh. I think we've come to some conclusions here, if anybody else has anything to say, be happy to hear it. Okay, so I guess we're ready for a public hearing, or do you want to come back with that uh final paragraph regarding um? Non-conforming uses, I think, Erin, you know what we're. You know what the 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 confusion is.
I do.
Basically, if the residence is destroyed, they have to come back.
Yes, and I don't have any problem bringing that language back to you uh next month to have, to continue that conversation, or we can set the public hearing, either one is is acceptable to me.
We just sent it to a public hearing already?
Yeah, let's send it to a public hearing.
Yeah, because we could always change it next time at the public hearing too, right, I mean.
Correct, yeah.
If you bring us something off the wall, I don't think you will, but if you did, let's just.
Just for fun?
Right, let's have a couple more meetings about when to set the meeting.
Okay, I hear the consensus, we're going to set a public hearing. And Erin's got some wonderful language on that last uh paragraph.
Yep, I'll modify that, yes.
Okay. Okay, I guess that's the end of our regular agenda. Uh liaison reports, anybody?
Earing committee is meeting tomorrow.
I was planning to attend the city council meeting this month. Or not city council meeting, I'm sorry, chamber or commerce meeting.
Ms. Kepner, does the steering committee? Uh, do you, did you fill them in on what we discussed, uh, now that we're having um our uh.
So tomorrow will be the first time that we meet since our work session. Um, and and yes, in the materials that we've gotten, um, for that, it has mentioned. What the planning commission wants, and what the planning commission is moving, you know, looking for in it.
Good. I interrupted, anybody else? It's a short month, it's a short month. No other liaisons, okay. Um. I guess Ms. Luto, if you go through everybody for commissioner staff comments. Pick somebody at random.
Oh, you want me to pick, you want me to pick?
Yeah, you start.
Uh, Commissioner Richardson.
Well, um, I apologize for being late, uh, since we've been on Zoom, I haven't exactly been zooming, uh, but uh. I'll make a news resolution to do better. Uh, and I do want to wish everybody the best of 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 the holidays this year. Try to make the best of it, uh, we're all under some strange circumstances, but try to make the best of it. And I think the old adage, count your blessings, uh, is especially meaningful this year, so uh happy holidays to everyone.
Commissioner Stern?
I'll just echo the sentiment of everyone, be safe, enjoy your families as much as you can, and uh happy holidays.
Mr. Patterson?
Uh, same, happy holidays, uh, and I know Tori's here watching us, so. Thank you for your help getting Santa to do our drive-by. I think everyone in the city enjoyed it and all of those who put that hard work in, it was awesome. Uh, I I enjoyed it, I I don't even have kids, so it was great, um. To you and everyone else who worked on that, the great committee and and all the the hands that went through that, I think that was awesome, thank you.
Commissioner Dowlin?
I agree with that sentiment, that was wonderful, seeing Santa drive by. Um, and likewise, I hope everyone has a great holiday.
Commissioner Burgess?
Um, no, just all the same, and and thank you for uh welcoming me this year to the, to the committee, or to the commission.
Commissioner Kepner?
Um. Yeah, happy holidays to everybody, um, welcome to our newest commissioner. Um, we're happy to have you here. And uh, and I'm reminded for my daughter's school all the time, because they are resilient raccoons, that this is the year of resiliency, so hopefully. Once we all get past this holiday season, and spring comes and vaccines are here, life will start going back to normal, and we'll all look back and think of how resilient we were.
Okay.
Vice Chair Smith?
Um, I'd like to welcome our three new uh uh commissioners, esp- especially. Commissioner Dowlin, um, thank you for joining up. Um, someday we'll actually meet you, all three of you, so uh look forward to that, everybody, uh, enjoy your families on these holidays, thank you.
I have no other comments except to say, you know, it was wonderful working with you all this year and have a safe and happy holiday season.
Motion to adjourn?
Second.
Adjourned.
Oh wait, I need to call a roll, hold on. Last one, it's, um, Commissioner Dowlin?
Yes.
Commissioner Kepner?
Yes.
Commissioner Patterson?
Yes.
Commissioner Richardson?
Yes.
Commissioner Stern?
Yes.
Commissioner Bardis?
Yes.
Vice Chair Smith?
In twenty years, no one's ever said no, so I'll say yes.
Have a wonderful evening, everybody.
No, I want to talk about air conditioners more.
Okay, enjoy yourselves, enjoy your families.